Looks like we are on air, so we will go ahead and open up the budget workshop here. And I will probably turn it over to our town manager to kind of walk us through where we're starting tonight and take it from there.
Okay, I received a phone call this morning about nine o'clock from Maine DOT that they needed by next week several letters of recommendation or whatever we call it for the roundabout project. So we're scrambling to work on that. As you know, we have committed our 10% through our TIF funds for the construction of the roundabout, but they also asked fortunately tonight and not tomorrow for basically in a council endorsement that they would move forward with the funding if we got the congressional earmark. So what you have before you is kind of what's on the screen right now. It's this legal sized sheet that's in landscape form. And what I want to point out to you, and I'll try to do it as best as I can up here, is that we have, we have had the funding for the roundabout at approximately $2 million. We rounded it up to $160,000 a year, which would represent about $2 million worth of funding we would have access to. My, my recommendation would be that in FY '26, it might not, it might not start until FY '26, our FY '26. So I would hold off on bonding anything until you actually knew when the project would start. If we received funding this month or next month, we would probably be a year in final design and selection and all that, probably wouldn't be ready for construction until the summer of, of '25, which would be our FY '26. So these line up pretty well. We have had this in our budget for, well, I've had these projects here listed for a while, but we're going to get into these in more depth at our next meeting when we, we kind of wrap up most of the budget discussion. But I wanted to just kind of give you an early review of what we were looking at. If you go down through the lines, you'll see things like annual paving. We've been doing that for a long time, budgeting anywhere. Last year was a big year, about 1.3 million. This year, we're knocking it down a little bit, down to just under 600,000. And we're also looking at the public safety tower this year. That's a potentially a $3 million project. That's why you see, anytime you see these numbers that go the same all the way across the page, that really represents a bonded project. So you see 240 a year, and that goes all the way across the page. That's for the three million, up to $3 million for that, those communication towers for public safety. We're hopeful that once they're constructed, we'll be able to recover some of those costs by selling space out to other cell providers. Right now, we've tried for unsuccessfully for two years to get them to come here and basically build towers, but that can change at any time, and we're going to keep pushing that if we can. We also have what I call summit expenses. As gas mains get put in around town, we basically share the cost of inspection with them 50/50. That's worked out really well and probably to our advantage more than anything. They also have a road bond in place for every year. I think it's about 100,000 or 150,000 that gets renewed every year. That's part of that cost as well. And then if you come down, there's 600,000 in there. This is kind of a good news situation. It looks like there's a new purchase and sale agreement for the Route One construction. Peter Kennedy sold his remaining land to Richard Hebert. They've got a purchase and sale agreement in place. And if that goes through, Skyview Drive and Route One would have a turning lane on it. That 600,000 is to go towards some of those costs that are eligible in that project. That would make the project for Foley's. And it looks like we may also see that senior housing project back again that Xanten walked away from. So Amy Cullen, a Cumberland resident, has been working with me and my staff and trying to bring that project back to the table. So you should, I hope, fingers crossed, in the next few months, see something back from both of those people for the credit enhancement agreement that was already approved for Foley's and hopefully a similar project, if not identical, to the one that the planning board approved with Xanten. So we don't know what that's, what the timing of both of those are. They're going to go through closing. I think the closing is somewhere between 90 and 120 days. So in the next few months, all of those pieces should come back together. So that number is really a placeholder for right now. I also put another placeholder in there for 80,000 for a part-time housing director. And that would be somebody that would eventually oversee, now this comes from the Housing Task Force recommendation, so this is why I said I wanted to lay it out for you tonight. And then in three weeks, we're not meeting on the 22nd because of Passover. We're going to push that out to the 29th, that meeting. On the 29th, we'll be meeting to basically talk more in detail about each one of these items. The items that you see there in blue, and that are in blue in your paper, those are items that I would, I haven't had funding for. And especially anything to do with transit, affordable housing, and even this position with the part-time housing director. If you look on your screen here, you'll see this red circle, and that's around FY '28. That begins in Ju-, July 1st of '27. That's the year TIF 1 will expire. And when TIF 1 expires, you lose it forever. So my recommendation to you is to have some discussion over the next year and consider about redoing TIF 1 to be an affordable housing TIF and a transit TIF. If you, if you designate that, that district as a affordable housing transit, TIF district, 75% of the money generated has to be spent on either transit or affordable housing or one or the other or both. So that would give you 20 more years to do something with future projects. Look at Metro. Metro will probably be here in either June or July to talk to you about potential route into Cumberland and where we could, where we could see some potential growth. They will also talk to you about their micro-transit. So those of you who remember when Metro was here last time, there was very little flexibility in the east-west routes. They really wanted to go north-south. Well, now, this micro-transit is, I guess the best way I can describe it is like, it's like an Uber ride from your house to the bus station. And that micro-transit has a smaller vehicle, it could be a van, could be a passenger van that would travel, and they're doing this pilot project in Falmouth, I think, this year, where we bring, bring the driver that is requesting a ride down to the transit stop so he could jump on the bus and basically continue and proceed. It's an actually pretty cool idea. I think, you know, I think we have a lot of opportunities for east-west travel here in our town. And, you know, with all the passenger buses, we own two, the school owns a bunch of them. I think we could figure out a way to work if really people were interested, maybe even expanding that service uptown, maybe Tunnel Blanchard and Skillen's Road out to the, you know, the fire station in West Cumberland somewhere where we have municipal parking all along that route. So there's some ideas. The other idea is with the Down Easter and looking at Styles Way and the 10, 12 acre field we had designated for the Little League fields, we could actually still put that parking lot in there or a portion of that parking lot and bring that right out to the, to a platform where the rail could intersect that. And that would, that wouldn't be, you know, that would be a good use of that money as well. And then you'd still have money for affordable housing. Right now, that district, District 1 generates about $800,000 plus a year of revenues. Again, it'll expire in FY '28. What I would strongly recommend you do is not let it expire before extending it. So once it goes to expiration, it's done.
How much runway?
That's the same question.
How much runway would we need as a town to make it not expire?
A year?
Yeah, that's plenty, you have plenty of time to do it now. I mean, we're not even into, you know, FY '25 yet. FY '25 is going to begin on July 1st. So between, between now and probably next spring, because next spring, all these TIF agreements are dated for April 1st each year. So it would be best if you could do it between now and next spring, but you really have until, you know, June 1st of 2027 to, you know, have this ready to go. So you have, you know, two, three years to do this.
But ideally before?
Ideally, you should have some discussions and, and talk about what you'd like to do. And then the sooner that you get, as the sooner you get that approved, it wouldn't be approved until next April or the following April, depending on when you kind of line this up. You could have plenty of time to set up what you'd like to do for potentially a housing director, could be 100% funded from that. The capital work that would go into building a platform, a train station, a parking lot, all that would, could be funded through that district. And operational funds for both and to pay for transit. The first three years of the transit, you'll get a kind of a sweetheart deal. They, they basically give you federal congestion mitigation monies to spend, and it reduces your cost to Metro. It'll be probably in that $50,000 range. After the three years, you're going to be in the 130,000 to 140,000 range. It's where Falmouth and Yarmouth, where Yarmouth is. And that's potentially where you would land, but that, those funds too can be paid from TIF monies. So it gives you a lot of flexibility to explore transit, and it gives you a lot of, as well as affordable housing moving forward. So the reason I bring this up tonight is because tonight I'm going to ask you to add an item to your agenda. It'll be, the last item would be to authorize the town manager to expend up to 10% of the roundabout project monies from TIF funds. So we're looking just for the authorization to send them a letter that says, should we get funding for the roundabout project? We would be authorized up to 10%, capped at 2 million without, if it goes beyond that, we'd have to come back for additional council authorization. So that's why, that's, this is why this has kind of jumped to the front of the line tonight for the finance committee. It's an important item. It's an important thing we've been working on for several years, and I think it warrants some time just for you to kind of let it sink in a little bit. The only obligation would be if we, if the federal government came and said, look, we're going to basically fund 90% of this for you. Do you want the 12, 13 million dollars or not? And I hope you would say yes, that we'd like to build this project. Because remember, it's not just the roundabout. It's also the sidewalks that are going to be going from Skillen's Greenhouse all the way down to the bottom of Morrison's Hill on both sides of the road. It's the sidewalks that'll go up to the bridge on Blackstrap Road to connect that for a future bridge deck and hopefully a future sidewalk on that deck. And then also back in the other direction, is it Cathy Lane, the first street there? Yeah, toward Cathy Lane. So I think we really did a nice job. There are going to be esplanades through there, there'll be street lighting, there'll be a lot of amenities that are going to be paid for, you know, through hopefully a federal earmark. And as earmarks go, this is a fairly small one, but still, it's a fairly big project for us and one we couldn't do without this kind of commitment. The commissioner is the one that's submitting it, the DOT commissioner, to our congressional delegation. Bob?
If I understood when you first started your remarks, you were looking for a vote from us. And that is an indication that we are in favor of accepting funds. Does that start a clock for us to commit to the funding for?
It commits the funding if you receive the earmark. So we will know about the earmark probably in the next two months.
So kind of there's two actions taken. The one is the last item.
On the agenda is to authorize.
And then the other one is something that we will do within the next couple of months or sooner.
We'll do that tonight.
Tonight?
Tonight, we've got to get the authorization to commit to the 10% funding, should we be authorized, should we get the earmark.
Just one action then?
Only one action.
Okay.
Yep, yeah. That was only just to kind of bring you out, because I was hoping to unroll this whole thing in a few weeks when we did, just started right from the TIF from the beginning, just to see each district, what each district is bringing in, what we're dealing with monies. The very bottom of that sheet kind of shows you where we are. We're kind of in a deficit mode now because we've done a lot of projects with TIF monies. That very bottom line, we're projecting to be at about 1.7 million underwater this year. By 2020, by 2033, if you do everything that's on the sheet, you'll be coming out, coming out of that about 2032. And by 2048, there'll still be about $4 million left to spend at the finish line. The difficulty I have with these numbers right now is these are all pre-valued, pre-reval, and there are still a lot of big projects that haven't hit the books yet. And when those projects hit the books, that, those numbers will creep up and that deficit will creep down. So this is all future IOUs right now if nothing changed. There's a lot that's going to change between now and September of '25. Shirley, Shirley.
Show my ignorance here. I, I couldn't find my sheet from last year that was the TIF sheet. It seemed like we were out of the red earlier than we are. Like it was like three more years where we're in the red for the TIF.
So this gets approved every year. And what I added is what is permitted in the TIF documents today. So you'll see, you'll see the roundabout in there. You'll also see fire truck payments in there. You'll also see the transit potential, you know, there's a, that blue area has no, no dollars associated with it. The ones below will be another fire truck back, you know, from TIF 8 that starts around FY '27. The Skyview Drive access was added this year to it. The housing director was added. And there could be more things over time that you want to look at. I just put those in as a placeholder so we don't kind of forget what we might want to buy, because what happens if this sheet's a blank sheet, people will come in and think we have, you know, $7 million to spend, when we've got other projects that are kind of needed in.
So where does the money come from when we're in the red?
It comes from, it comes from an IOU from the general fund. So the, basically you have.
This is money borrowed out of the general fund?
From the TIF.
To pay all those years until?
Until we come back out of the bank.
Okay. One thing I'd like to look at, and this may be how you did it last year. You did the fiscal year maybe by TIF 1, by the eight different TIFs?
Yep.
What they were, what they're.
Sure. That, that's what I was planning to do on the 29th. So you could see the value of each district, when they expire, and we'll get, we'll get into that pretty deep next time so that you'll see where those districts all line up. You won't, what I'm afraid of honestly is that you'll have more projects than you will monies because things will just keep getting added and added and added.
I know, I'm worried about that.
So you can, we can start with a blank sheet of paper very easily. I can wipe out all those numbers after '25 except for things that you commit to. Every year, you basically have committed some monies to paving. Last year, we had a lot of matching funds that we were able to get, and we're going to continue to try to maximize those when we can. So that was helpful. Main Street was one of those where we were able to get $300,000 of money. So we basically said we'd be crazy not to take that, but it did put us back a little bit, but it was TIF eligible. So why spend it from your general fund when you can spend it from your TIF fund? So we'll give you that whole list, and I'll show you each one of the eight districts and how they line up. So, but the real news for the TIF issue is just, just be careful and have a plan because you don't have to fund all that equipment out of the TIF funds. I just basically threw it out there just to show you that once you start down that path, especially if it's a bond, then you basically are stuck on that path for 20 years. So you might want to consider doing the bonds from the general fund and, and leaving that for other major capital funds. And that's your call.
Yeah, I'd like to caution the council. I've been listening to some information about debt, government debt, that just keeps rising and rising and rising. And I don't, this is still debt, even though it's not a bond, it's still debt. And it doesn't show up quite like other indebtedness, right? In our books, if you were just to look at our books, this, but it's still an IOU. It's just not to a bond bank. It's not to.
And that's one of the issues we've had with our auditors and asked for more informational and more funds and reports that would be put into the audit so that you could actually see which district, where they were, what they, where they were headed, which ones were going to be your predominant districts.
Okay.
So all of that, I'm hopeful, been working with Katie, and we actually hired an outside audit firm to come in to help with us to kind of line these up, our capital as well as our TIF, because that was one of the hardest things we've done, because we've been doing a lot of this through Excel. And we said, how do we get this into Munis? And that auditor said, well, it should be in Munis. Well, it's been in Munis, but it's been kind of hodgepodge around a little bit. So we want to clean that up. We want to basically be able to go in and say, show us what our values for each district are. Each district will have its own account. Each district will have its own funding source, and it's a lot cleaner and easier to follow than following it on an Excel spreadsheet. So I could put anything up there and, you know, how do you, how do you tie that back to our accounting? And that's what I'd like to see.
So talking about debt, I think the other, the other piece of debt is what is that ratio between revenues, you know, valuation? You know, sometimes you say, oh, I got a lot of debt. I mean, I've, I've taken out more debt, but it, you know, people get a raise, they, they're, so they had, they had the ability to take on more debt. So I think it's, that's, that's an important way to look at it too.
Debt to equity.
Right. So we just start to say, we got a bunch of debt. We may have a bunch of debt, but how's that play out in relationship to revenues and our ability to pay it and?
No, I think that's a really good, good sign of caution, but I'd also caution you that these have finite lives. So when you get to 2048, you don't want to have any money left over. You really want to have expended all the money that you said you were going to expend. You want to pay it, you want to, you want to build stuff. You want to basically, you know, do the capital projects you wanted to do and do all the things you laid out in each one of those documents. So to me, putting it up there at least shows you you've got a little bit of a plan, but as you go forward, I'd be looking out, you know, five, 10 years and see where you're going to land. This gets you in a place where you'll be okay when you get to the finish line. Like I said, you're going to still be, you know, four to five million dollars to the good, but that money is, it's going to be closer to reality in another year or two because I, I think it's grossly underestimated right now.
I mean, I would also think that it might make sense for us, I mean, even if we did decide to extend TIF 1, that doesn't lock us into particular projects, right? So we could do the comprehensive plan, get all of that feedback and use that as our goalposts for what projects we do moving forward, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. Very easy to do. I honestly, I would get away from fire trucks and look more at infrastructure such as extension of water lines. You know, my personal feeling would be to get, to eliminate the fire trucks that we have in there and put in there, you know, that water tower on Blueberry Hill, which would get the critical portion of Bruce Hill Road, you know, water.
Yeah.
Which it desperately needs. So I think you have a ton of options, and I just, you don't have to jump just because somebody asks you, we've got to do it today. Well, you got, you got, you know, 24 more years to get it done. And as long as you keep looking ahead, I think you'll be okay. So that's, that's kind of the issue I had for tonight related to that item on your agenda. I also gave to you tonight kind of our, our answers to questions that have come up so far in the budget process, and they're in this handout. This is about four pages now. We'll get, we'll get that put online tomorrow. This is about four pages now. We'll get, we'll get that put online tomorrow. And, oh, they're all good questions. They're all good questions. So we'll have those online tomorrow. And I'm going to jump to a different slide now.
Before we jump, real quick, just to clarify, I think to Shirley's point about the red underneath here as you track it, obviously, we want to dance around zero as best we can all the way to the finish line, right? You want to end with nothing in the account effectively, right? But I remember also in the previous sheets that we have, like I, I had thought that we turned into the black in like...
Earlier.
Yeah, like 2029 or 2030 or something, which still even then seemed like forever.
But that's what I asked. And that's why he said he added those, like the firetruck and the tower and...
So those additional additions are what's keeping us?
Yeah.
A little bit longer runway in the red, right?
And I'm happy to take all those off, but I also caution you to say...
I just wanted to make sure I was remembering it correctly.
No, you're absolutely right. For our meeting on the 29th, I'll basically leave the, hopefully the money for the roundabout on there. And I'll take off, you know, anything to the right of 25 that has not been approved yet. So the...
Yeah, and even if you did the, like the categories, and then I think under the categories, you put what, what they paid for.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
So we can see, TIF one, you know, TIF pays for...
It gets to be, well, they all pay for everything, kind of. So that's, you know, like paving, they all contribute to paving.
That's true.
So there's, they're not all blended. Some of them, like the paramedics have to come out of TIF eight. Some of the other stuff can come out of the other districts. So it does bounce around a little bit.
Does, does the Summit expense the capital outlet that ends in 28? Is that because that activity only happens in TIF one? Or why does it stop?
It, it, I don't think they're going to be putting a lot more gas mains in. So a lot of, a lot of years, we don't even reach that number. So last year, I think they put in a gas main on Route one. They extended it up to that new apartment condo complex thing. And that, you know, we had to have monies for, so we left it in there. There are a few more, like they're looking to bring the gas underneath the turnpike as well. So that extension is going to require more inspection down in that area of West Cumberland. So there are things that they're doing that we just don't know usually until, you know, the spring when they have their work planned for the summer. And I just didn't want to be caught, you know, having to take it from our own paving budget out of the general fund. That's why it's there. It can disappear once, you know, once you feel like they're pretty well done.
I think it's wise to have energy options. They said last week that electricity is going up 12%.
I know, which frustrates me so much about the solar.
Because all these people have, you know, people with cars that plug in.
Well, Bob's working on that with me right now. You want to talk to them about that, Bob, a little bit? No?
No.
Hold my power for just a little bit longer.
I should know, you're way ahead of me in the thinking department.
I just want to throw something out. We have a capital improvement project, CIP.
Right.
And we can either borrow it and pay for it through the general fund. And so a lot of these things here, to me, are capital improvement projects but paid for it in a different way.
Correct.
It's still debt, but I think it's important that we, we, you know, analyze that these are capital improvement, but they're long-term goals for the community. And the funding mechanism is different. There's, there's a couple of different ways to fund it. And one of the ways is through TIF projects, TIF monies. Okay, that being said, back to Summit. I, I noticed that there was a, I think there's a plan for bringing in the gas to Valhalla.
Chris, I don't remember that. We, we, they asked us, and I think they would do it in a heartbeat. Our, if you remember when Maine State Golf Association and Rachel's, they were both had a pretty sweetheart deal with propane and they never wanted to change over. So that's why we haven't yet. But, I mean, it comes right through the woods there, I think, and goes up Valhalla Road a little bit. So we're pretty close to the main if we wanted to.
Right. And one of the, one of the things we're working on now is trying to get Grant from Siemens to replace the antiquated heating cooling system with...
Antiquated heating cooling system with a heat pump system. And the reason why we qualify for that is because we're not on natural gas right now. So it's more going to be electrical heat pumps more so than natural gas. So then it goes back to...
Expansion of the solar field. Again, capital improvement projects that have long-term benefits to the community, net zero in energy cost at some point by expansion there and electrification.
Yeah, we're, we've been doing pretty well. Chris has had a, a good relationship. Siemens did basically all the school conversions. I think they've done a good job at the schools. They did our senior housing project. The senior housing project has been a little bit of a challenge. I mean, especially in the last two months where we've lost power twice. This last big storm we had, we've been up, we were up there daily just to do safety checks and wellness checks on everybody. Everybody was in good spirits. But it just leads to thinking about, you know, we're going to have to look at some type of generators or heating systems to put in those places that would work when the, the power went out. Because a lot of people like myself have, you know, gas stoves that worked through a power outage. And those are just direct vents right out the side of the house and they would work pretty well. But do you balance that against, you know, potentially a generator? You put a generator in and maybe you have to put five generators in, four generators in, just the way they're wired. I talked to Rusty Gugans today and he's going to do a little, a little homework to see if we can somehow put a generator in prior to it being stepped down at the transformers. Because if we could, if we could do it ourselves and once the power went out, the generator would kick in and feed the transformers, then I don't have to worry about which house is on, which house is off, which circuit is on, which circuit is off. And it would almost act as a generator for that whole circle. I, I think it can be done, but I don't know if it would be so expensive. It would be cheaper just to put in smaller units around the circle. So we're playing around with that right now. We'll have to go back to the Housing Authority with that proposal and see what their thoughts are. The problem is, it's always a crisis when it's right next to an event. And about six months from now, it's no longer a crisis. We haven't had a power outage. What are you worried about?
I don't know, with all the flooding.
Yeah, then we'll deal with the water. Yeah, right. So I think we're going to be in this cycle for a while. And I think we're, I think getting prepared for it is, is not a bad thing. And maybe it's a, maybe it's a smaller program where all we're doing is turning on some lights and the heating systems because they're all gas-fired stove, they're not drawing a lot of electricity. So we could really pretty much power up most of their heating systems and maybe a few lights without too, too much of a, of a generator. So those are the things we're playing around with. And I think, hopefully by fall, we'll have a, something to the Housing Authority so they can look at it and analyze it. And, you know, even if it's portable generators, and if, if it's a small enough load that we could do with portable generators, we'd be willing to look at that too. Portable generators and transfer switches outside the building. So there's a lot of ideas that are kicking around right now and hopefully we'll come up with something.
Chris, do you feel like you're getting good advice from Siemens?
Yeah, Nick, we haven't received the full report yet.
We had a bad run with them once.
Yeah, this building.
And so I'm, they owe us some goodwill.
I think...
Make sure you capitalize on that.
It's a good project. I think it'll be a good project. We're just trying to figure out what, when it comes in, what the expense is going to be. We may, if it is a big expense, we may try to phase it in over two or three years.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Just, our, our memories are long.
Yeah, I know.
All right. So I'm going to probably jump over there because I can't see. We are, we are still working through the budget process right now. And I'm not going to try to sugarcoat this in any way, but it, it has not been a fun year or a fun budget process. My biggest concern honestly is, I'm not sure where to go anymore. Because we have gone through all of the capital, all of the operational budgets, and we've gone through all the revenue budgets. And we have squeezed every dime we can out of the revenues and looked at everything in the capital budgets. And we're really going to be down to essentially personnel. If you want to make changes, I think that's really the only place that it will work. I think we have catching up to do with some of our neighbors as far as wages are concerned. I think we're doing pretty well, keeping the staff we've been able to keep. But I think it's going to get harder every year. So I'll just come over that side for a sec. So when I, when I look at, I don't want to lose anything. I'm very nervous when I close these sheets. All right. Here's my checklist. So we have gone through all of the departments and basically all the department requests and reduced that by well over 300,000. Then we get down to the bottom line. Good news, our, our, our health insurance came in at 2% this year. So now we were able to reduce the operational budget another $20,000. We haven't applied that to every single account yet. Well, I think Katie just did. So we're getting very close to real numbers, but, and I'll have those for you next time. But the, the overall increase in, in the operational budget is about $923,000. We have over a quarter million dollar increase in recreation, but they also have an increase in their revenues as well. And our general revenues, we just added another 25,000 to the fire EMS lines because they basically have been producing closer to 185, 200,000 a year, not the 160 we've had budgeted. So, but that still gets us down to, you know, 5.78% expenses. So around $370,000 in additional expenses. Remember that we lost $155,000 in revenue sharing this year? And that, that was a real kick in the gut, to be honest with you.
Did, did we get any clarifying information from the state as to why the drop?
Not yet. It's, it's here, the, the information has to do with formulas. And their formula changed, the second part of revenue sharing changed slightly. And it sounds really small, but they changed it by 13, 13 hundredths of a percentage. And when they did that, we lost $155,000.
Wow.
So I've got a call into main revenue and just to sit down and just, if they can explain it. The complicated formulas they have out there are just that. They're numbers that don't mean much to most of us. And how they get there is, is interesting. But, but had we not lost that, we'd have been okay. What happened to us last year, between the two years from FY23 to FY24, and these are FY25 projections, is that we gained $400 million in appreciation as a town. Doesn't mean we built $400 million worth of stuff. It means all our values went up $400 million. Now, that seems like a lot. And when we, when we're basically basing our budget on today at 1.5 billion to go up 400 million, the state's valuing us at just over 2.3 billion today. So if we keep doing that, that's, it's going to be a big number when we get to the actual revals. I mean, we were estimating it was 60%, but it's, it's definitely climbing above that.
And can you remind me, the state has us at such a higher number because they're using trued up numbers day in, day out, and we just haven't caught up by doing our own revale to bring those numbers up? That's why we're still at the 1.5 billion as opposed to 2. whatever billion?
We haven't done a revaluation since, since 2008. And that was with the first, the last new numbers we presented. That was right after Shabig Island left Cumberland. So then we went through a whole series of recessions and that lasted, you know, six or seven years. We came out of that. We were thinking about it. Numbers seemed to be better. But right after the pandemic, things just got crazy. So, and during the pandemic. So we're at a point where we have to do something. We'll probably end up somewhere closer to 2.4 billion than 1.6 billion. But even that seems a reach. But the way the, the sales are still going fairly strong, we don't see us going backwards. But everyone has to be trued up to a fair value. And that's what John has been working on. And he'll be at it, you know, pretty, pretty aggressively, you know, in the next month or two. So he'll get this year put to bed. The curve ball that the state threw at him last year was the whole tax stabilization piece. And he had to work on that with mega reports, requirements that he had to fill out for the state. And we received over $300,000 in, you know, state stabilization funds. We're, we're all caught up right now, Katie, right? They paid us our last payment. So last week was the last payment. So they did 100% pay us back. So nothing, you know, that was, that was really good. But, you know, we were curious to see where that was going to go. And we did get all our money back, which was good. So even though we're, you know, still 370 and searching for more to basically take that off of the mill rate if we can, the SAD is still very early in the game. They're still looking at somewhere around 7.8% or, that's almost a $1.8 million increase. The county is up a little over 100,000. That's our total payment. But remember, you know, we, part of that payment is $95,000 that we paid over that when they changed theirs, their year to a fiscal year.
Interesting about, sorry to interrupt, but the SAD budget, when I was taking a look at it, they have $810,000 coming off debt service and they still have a $1.7 million increase.
So, talking to the mics so they can hear you. They're going to start yelling in a minute.
So I'll say that for the public who chooses to watch. They, when I looked at their budget, they have an $810,000 reduction in debt service. If you add their increase of 1.792 or 1.8, we're looking at more of a $2.6 million increase than a $1.8 million increase. I would hope to think that they could bring that down. That's, that's a huge increase.
And these are very preliminary numbers. These aren't things that, they have really gotten too deep into the budget.
And maybe they disregarded that 810, thinking that that's their cushion or something for, for later on, but...
Well, and then the other thing is as these TIF districts grow, the, the TIF district budgets are basically part of our tax rate as well. Those funds have to be raised and that, that those TIF districts increased by about $314,000 this year over last year just in value. More, more, mostly Ocean View across the street and some of the Route one stuff. So that brings us up to about a $2.2 million increase to the mill rate. And that's pretty significant. So that's about a dollar 20 right now. So it's big, big numbers. So what, when I look at that, I just try to figure out, okay, where do we start to try to, you know, bring that number down? And when we're a pretty small percentage of that, it's, it doesn't, doesn't come easy. So you have in front of you all my math and all my worksheets, primarily because I think it's easier to follow the math when you see it's on that 11 by 17 sheet. You can look at that. And if you get stuck, let me know. But I use it just to try to make sure we don't miss something. Everything from, you know, the county tax to the, the TIF funds to everything else we have. We are, we are very, very close to about the minimum mill rate you can have for the expenses and the, and the services we deliver. So that's why I'm saying, I just don't know where to go at this point other than, you know, abolishing programs. When, when you say that in one breath, people go, well, what don't we need? People would say, oh, do we really need recreation? Well, recreation pays for it.
A lot of money.
You know, we, you don't, you don't gain anything.
I know that one of our items was lost revenue, the bags, trash bags. That's factored into here as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Roughly, how much was that we were going to be losing in revenue?
I think we budgeted about 140, 150,000 dollars of loss because we'll collect them for the first six months of the next fiscal year. We'll go through December.
Yeah.
And that'll, that'll be an item that you're going to have to decide. I mean, there are towns that still charge for trash bags. But it's going to be the honor system. And I, I just don't know. I don't know. It's not really enforceable. We're not going to, I'm not going to spend 40 or 50,000 to go out and have people go out and flip trashcans to see if they've got green bags in there. So I, it's, it's tough. I think Kenny Bunkport does that with the trash bags. But when they get dumped into the, these top of these trucks, they're in. Bob?
I hate when we use that word, mill rate, because it, it, it's, to me, it's so meaningless. And if we, if we start doing comparisons, town, town to town, to town, I think, you know, unless you, unless we're using the state's number of, of valuation and, and use that and kind of decipher what the mill rate is based on that, I have a hard time putting any...
Yeah, that's very true. When we're at, I don't know, we're below 70% now. Some of the towns around us are closer to 100%. So you'll see Falmouth and I... So you'll see Falmouth and I believe Cape, their mill rates are in the, probably the 14s and we're going to be in the 22s. But they, they just finished a revale, so they're already readjusted to full valuation. We'll be down in that 13, 14 dollar range when we, when we reset, but we don't know what that is yet. We won't know probably for another year.
Is there a way to take that state valuation, community, community to community and, and come up with a mill rate that, that's?
Oh, I, I can show you that. I can show you that mill rate if you want to see that in, in the next presentation. I'll, I'll take all the towns around us in Cumberland County if you want. We can get the whole county and I can show you what their equalized mill rate is. That's easy to do. Ironically, this year, from this year to last year, we dropped $2. We were over 14 last year and this year we're at 12, 12 and change. And I was, I go, how the heck did that happen? And that's on the state equalized mill rates. So the state does it. They basically go in and equalize mill rates every year because they have to give you money for education. And everybody has to be kind of at a level playing field for that to happen. So I, I'd be happy to do that so you can see where we are in comparison. That would be closer than what we have today.
Right, right. I, I think that I, I would, that would be something I could.
I'll bring, I'll bring them all in for Cumberland County and you can look at them.
Yeah, you know what else? Oh, go ahead, please.
But based, based on conversations that we've had with, with staff and with department heads, you know, we're, we're, we're not meeting the needs of the community or, you know, well, we'd like to have three more paramedics. We'd like to have another police officer. We'd like to have X, Y, and Z. We'd like to. So we're not, we're not overspending by any stretch.
Yeah, it's, it's hard when you went through your last presentation by the, you know, fire, police and police chiefs, and they basically showed you the strain they've been under and where we are in comparison to our neighbors. It's, 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 we're much further behind than I thought we were going to be, especially on fire EMS. So. But where, where does it stop, Bob? When, when I, when I'm landing on our side at, you know, 6% and we're at 370,000, you know, that by itself is, is probably somewhere around 30 cents on the mill rate. But again, then we come down here and we've got to add another, you know, 30 cents for the TIF. When we combine everything and subtract out our revenues, we're, we're pushing 35, 36 cents on the mill rate as a town. And then you've got the SAD and the county as well. And, you know, all of a sudden, you know, you've got a pretty big number. So. And this year, worse than any year with, you know, I'm trying to think what it was, 600, 600, 700 properties this, last year that got the stabilization rebate. They're not going to have that rebate from last year applied to this year and they're going to be paying for two years of increases in taxes. And that's going to be like a 10% increase in taxes. So that's, that's a heavy, that's a heavy thing to carry. And I, I don't know what much more we can do when we get the services that we deliver for just under $6.8 million net. I think we do a pretty good job. So when, when Chris and I and Katie sit down and we kind of just go, okay, where can we go next? We're not going to move the needle that far, you know? Like I showed you last time, you know, it's, it's going to take, I think it was $150,000 to move it down 10 cents, you know?
Well, it's fun, it's frustrating, right? You look at the loss of $155,000 in state revenue sharing. And then you look at an increase in our insurance of $157,000. Those two cover the entire increase.
Right.
300 and what? 70?
Workers' comp is $200,000.
Just insurance and just losing that.
Right.
Cover that. And so it, it, you know, it strikes me that we can go, I start highlighting bigger sections where we're spending almost 100,000 more this year than we did last year or budgeting 100,000 more and saying, do we focus on those areas or do we simply take? I mean, each section, if it drops a small percentage, reaches that. But it's, it strikes me as those are the big issues, the revenue sharing and $157,000 increase in insurance. But.
Yeah.
What can we do about the insurance? Nothing?
Well, we're working on it. We may, we may not get it applied till next year. I mean, we're, Katie and Chris are working on with main municipal and workers' comp to try to, try to, you know, set up things that would reduce that by, you know, potentially 50,000. But that won't show up until next year's budget. So the savings that we're trying to plan for, we can't take credit for this year. It'll be, you know, the following years. You can, you know, we've lost bag revenues. That was another 150,000 mark and that was, you know, we'd just.
All right.
Because we've gone to the automated pickup, we saved a little bit on solid waste collection in our first year because the first six months are just the way it is now. And then we're waiting for the new truck. And when that get, when that arrives, it will probably be early spring that, you know, the two containers will be delivered to every household. So we'll have some work this year to do, to do that. Now, the one thing, the things I will tell you that I'd really like you to think about for our next meeting is the, what, what's not in the budget? You know, we don't have anything yet in here for the comprehensive plan. That, that's not free. You know, you're going to, you're going to have to hire consultants, mapping consultants, a lot of people to update that. That was over 100,000 last time. Probably be closer to 140 this time. I'm trying to think. We didn't fund any additional requests for employees for any department. Those all got cut out in the first round. So that, that'll continue to come back every year to you. And as people look at what we're providing for services, we're going to get stretched. So the regional, the regionalization thing, as much as we, we talk about it, we've got to figure out a way to do something about it. Because honestly, the future isn't bright if we're going to continue on the path we are now. Everybody build their own empire and try to figure it out. It just doesn't work.
Does the fire budget increase of 106,000, does that include any additional staff? I didn't think so, right? Okay. Even based on last week's presentation or two weeks ago?
No, no, no. No, I know you and I talked about adding, you know, taking more from the TIF budget, which you could do. But I wouldn't recommend it. You're, you're already.
I think we've talked about.
Almost three and a half people are funded through TIF right now, paramedics.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
And the concern is at some point those TIF funds run out and then you have to move that back into a general fund, which would be a significant mill rate increase. And so it's almost like, once you put it in, you never bring it back.
Well, it's hard, it's hard to bring it back because the only way you could do that successfully, Mark, is if, similar to what you have in TIF A, anytime you change a TIF district, ask, have the ability to throttle the, either 100%, 50%, whatever you want to do. Have the ability to throttle that money back and forth if you can, so that you have the flexibility that if you wanted to do something like that and, you know, basically put more money into the general fund, you could do that so that you could offset some of this. Right now it'd be difficult to do that, only because I'm trying to encourage you to hold off until you see what the new school debt will be. The early numbers, I will tell you, are very encouraging. This will probably be the best time to do this project, better than what I'd see anytime in the future. In FY '31, you see, I don't know, 8, $900,000 of debt coming off that one year. So if there's a way to spread that debt out over five years, it would really be a very positive impact to the community. It's going to line up with the revale. So the number's going to sound different, but if it's a 40 cent number today, it's probably going to be a 20 cent number when the revale is in effect. So that's just, be careful of what you hear from numbers. But the numbers are going to be lower. And I, I think they're doing a pretty good job trying to line up a smaller increase. And doing what we did just a few years ago with the debt service reserve, we were able to basically sell our general obligation bonds and receive a fairly significant bond premium that we set aside and put that in the debt service reserve. And then we flattened out the impact as the debt climbed. We tried to keep it as flat as we could for five years until the, until the lines crossed essentially. And that was a really easy way to, you know, make it a lot, a lot more tolerable when we brought on those big capital projects. So I think the school is looking at doing something very similar and Scott and I have been talking back and forth. And I think I'm hopeful that in the next couple of weeks, by the time we have our next meeting, we'll have a better picture of what that looks like. I know we have our joint standing committee this Wednesday night. I, I don't think that's really going to really get involved with the school numbers or what they have because we really haven't received those. I think Megan's going to be here tonight to talk a little bit about the project. I don't think she's going to be ready to give us an update yet on, you know, where they think, you know, the debt service schedule is going to come in. They're going to have to get that from myself and Katie and we're, we're working hard at that right now with those numbers. And I think they're going to be a lot better than they were the last time. Of course, they have to be. I mean, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot less money. So. But it's a better timing, at least for us. And then I think as we get more money from Ocean View, if you want to cap it at what you're doing today and then bring some back to the general fund in the future to kind of offset that debt, you might only have to do that for one or two years. And that would really kind of even bring it down further. So you have some flexibility with what you're going to do. But what I would advise is once you, once you shift it back to the general fund, just leave it because it's going to be too complicated to bring it back.
Mark?
Yes, please.
One of the things that's, that's always concerned me is, is that the conversations that are held here are in response to what they do across the street. And we're always doing that. And, and we, I look across the street and we have a, basically a flat student enrollment over there. And, and they're not just coming in with costs of living increases. Their, their numbers are projected even higher. And yes, you can talk about $800,000 coming off, off the, off the debt, but by the time it comes off, they will have increased the budget that will, it, it, we, we never get ahead. And it's, I hate having the conversations, what can we do? We have to stop operating in these, my wife calls it, these silos, you know, this is what we're doing over here and what's going on over here. I would love to have been at the school board meeting the other night and talked to the kids who, who were advocating for the turf field for $3 million. I'm thinking to myself, we could use that $3 million over here to fund some positions that are, I think, you know, if you talk about value, I think they have more value over here than they do over there. And so, you know, again, we, we, we say the same things over and over again. Consolidations, utilization of shared services, blah, blah, blah.
But Bob, don't, don't feel it's going on deaf ears. I mean, we operate pretty well with, with Scott Poole and, and Jeff Porter. I mean, we're sharing over $150,000 right now in shared services that you don't even see. Is, is that pretty close, Chris? About 150?
It's a little bit higher, actually.
So.
I know, I know.
But, but don't get discouraged. I can't, I don't like you living in a silo. When I think of a silo, I think of just showing you the municipal budget. If I just wanted to just say, okay, this is all great. We should be fine. All right, well, let's move on. I can't do that because I know what the county is. I know what this is coming and I know what the old.
They don't, they don't look at ours, right?
They don't look at, you know, there's no conversations and.
Right.
And frankly, again, you know, when you have people over there that only serve for a single term and, and there's no, there's no knowledge gained and continuity of understanding.
I've been having, reaching out to a few, just sort of when I run into them, about the optics of it all. Unfortunately, because my son's a football coach, I keep getting fed information from him that sort of puts me a little bit more in the know than I'd rather be about that. But I've been, I've reached out to Leanne and shared some information with Amy about just the optics. Like the turf field seems to be like a Trojan horse because that proposal has $10 million in other expenses that are not new school expenses. But the turf field's got everybody's attention. And the turf field's got everybody's attention when their budget's going up $1.8 million. You know, that's what people are focused on, not on the hard, fast numbers. So I'm just, you know, whenever we can, we need to look at what are the, the real cost numbers. I know it's not their intent for the turf field to be the Trojan horse, but that's, from my perspective, that's a little bit what it looks like.
If you look back at the, the performing arts center, that was a very close vote.
Yep. And had the turf field on it until the very last minute and they removed it.
I think, I think the point I understand is there has never been any fundraising over there for anything.
I agree. That, that would be the best way to go for it.
If you want these things, there, there has to be some, some little bit more heavy lifting than what we're seeing.
It's what we'll try to do with the library.
Yeah, please, Tig.
I have a question, Bill. So looking at places where we maybe could pull back a little bit, so the housing director, part-time, right?
Yeah, it's TIF though.
But that's within the TIF, yeah.
That's not in the general fund. Yeah, that, that doesn't help you. That doesn't help the general fund.
It's still a lot of money though, right?
Oh yeah, I'm not saying do it. I'm just saying.
You, you could effectively put that in blue as well, right?
Yeah, that's what I would recommend you do.
When, when TIF 1 gets renewed, if it does get renewed, right? So like.
If you reset TIF 1, that's when you should do that. That would be the best time to do that. When TIF 1 got reset, that would, that would be an eligible cost for a housing director.
If I could finish my thought, which would be that I think that also coming off of the vote that we just went through and knowing that we're going to be hiring a new town planner, and yes, I understand that it's, it's TIF. I think that it might be good to kind of put a pin in that until not only, of course, have we made the decision about TIF 1, but also if we are doing a dig into the comprehensive plan and understand what initiatives people would like to see in affordable housing and kind of understanding whether or not that is an added position or if that's something that either the new town planner, depending on what their skillset is, if, if they could kind of take ownership of that as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. We'd kind of do that right now by committee. We don't really, we do charge the housing budget monies for Carla and Christina today. But my, my time, Katie's time, Chris's time, none of that gets charged to that budget. So I, I think it's a little bit of a word of caution I'd give you. Just be careful where you go with that because I think we've really run Hawthorne Court very well.
Yep.
It's well maintained. It's, it's, you know, roofs are replaced, heating systems, windows, kitchens. We, we've done a lot of work there and we're very diligent in trying to keep the place looking good. We also have a lot of outside stuff we'll have to do over time, you know, siding, patios, fences. All of that stuff doesn't take care of itself and it has to be done over time. So for me, we've used a lot of town resources to kind of, you know, keep the cost lower. One of the recommendations you got from the housing task force was to look at that and try to tie that into some income level so that it isn't open to everybody. That maybe it should be 60 or 80% AMI so that the people that need it most could be, could there, could be there and stay in the community. So those are going to be tough, tough things to wrestle with. I mean, obviously it wouldn't impact any residents that live there today. But those waiting lists have been around for 25, 30 years and people that have been on them for a long time are going to be pretty upset. It'll be one way to shrink the list pretty quickly. But at the same time, when I look at the residents that are living there today, it's almost, almost that by default. So most of the people that are there really, you know, would have probably qualified if they, if we had a, an income qualification today. So I, you know, I would be careful to change too much because it's a system that's ver, that has worked very well for many, many years. But you're right. I mean, sometimes the appearance, not everybody knows how TIF and general funds are tied together. So the appearance of basically delaying some of these things as well is not a bad thing.
Well, I was also just wondering as we're hearing the murmurings of if the state, so we know that there are, what? We need to hit 80,000 housing units by 2030, according to what the Mills administration has asked for, right? So if we're not beginning to hit those numbers or looking like we're even close to hitting those numbers, it's possible at some point the state could intervene and say, okay, Cumberland, you need to go off and build X, Y, Z, right? And so I'm just, and none of us know what the timing looks like on any of that. But it would also just be interesting, or it'd be a good exercise to kind of prioritize what we're doing. Or maybe it, maybe it's where we talk to Steve Moriarty and Teresa Person to kind of understand what's happening at the state level around this. Because at some point, right, we're going to possibly lose home rule. And it could be a situation where the state is giving us a mandate on what we need to build.
That's very true. That's very true. They could basically, you are creatures of the state. All your authority comes from them. So if they take it away, developers could come in and, you know, basically double lots, you know? Lots that are, anything less than, anything more than a half acre could have another unit on it. Anything more than two acres could have four more units on it. I mean, that could happen and your zoning could go right out the window. Tig, you bring up a great point that a lot of people aren't paying attention is that we are creatures of the state. So we have to be careful that they could take our authority away. That scares me. But what scares me more is if employers start waking up and saying, I can't attract people to my, you know, workforce anymore because there's no place for them to live. What happens to Texas Instruments? You know, what happens to? What happens to Texas Instruments? You know, what happens to Unum? What happens to some of our major employers in our area when they can't get workers because they can't afford to live here? They move out of state. And then you've got big empty warehouses everywhere, and you're kind of trying to figure out what's next. And that singly could have the biggest impact on our economy, more so than anything else does. So I'm a little bit worried about the reaction from the big, big employers in the state. And if that goes, if that starts to creep out of state, we're gonna all be in a lot of trouble. We really are. So we should keep talking about it, but we should also look at our, our own zoning and look at, in the comprehensive plan, and look at, you know, do we look at setback reductions where we have infrastructure in place so that, you know, we're not building all these long roads and long sub, big subdivisions in places that are outside of the town, but if there is a way to do some infill and maybe expansion of the sewer, so it can allow for that in certain areas that we have everything else but the sewer. So those are, those are things to look at probably a little bit more closely in the comp plan. And I think the sooner we start talking about that, I think the better off we're gonna be, because it's gonna take us a few months to get a committee formed and, and get everybody together and start feeling out a process that we want to see in this next comp plan, because it's gonna be an important one. And a lot of it will be focused around housing.
Can the comp plan, the vendors that we use consultants, can those come out of TIF?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
No.
Thanks.
Even, even if you had a huge section of your comp plan talking about economic development?
You could use that, you could use that portion to fund.
Pro rate it.
There is, yeah, it would be a percentage.
Do you have, other than how it was advertised, do you have a job description for the planner, sustainable?
Yeah.
Um, I'd love to see that. My, my two cents, I guess, is sustainability has a different definition for many different people. It's not one of those things we can nail down, you know? Three years ago, sustainability for Bob Vale was being able to grow enough food to feed our community. You know, for some people, that's what sustainability is. You know, for others, it's being able to pay their taxes while they stay in their homes. That's sustainable, what feels like sustain. So I'd love to just have a look at it.
Yeah, make a look at it.
Not that I have anything to add, or.
Can I ask, on the, like, increase in, anything that we share, that we have an agreement with North Yarmouth on, are those revenues also set in here to offset? Like, I see the library is increasing, but I know that, what is it, thirty-eight percent of that is shared with North Yarmouth?
Yes.
Is that fifty-seven thousand dollar number of an increase, does that reflect, so if you go down to library, it's like row twenty-two? Or, yeah, all right, maybe it's mislabeled.
Yeah, it's probably one of the higher ones. I basically put these in order of change now.
Row nine, row nine in the spreadsheet, there you go.
Okay.
Fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Is that, that's the total inc- sorry, row nine of the spreadsheet?
Right, I, I messed these all up, because I wanted to see them from highest to lowest.
Oh, got it, got it, good call.
So they're, they're up, they're up there in their increase, yeah.
There you go, right there.
Yeah.
Uh, so my question is, is that fifty-seven thousand dollar increase, is that our share of the increase, or is that the total increase?
That's gross, that's gross. And the revenue is in the, in the revenue budget under library, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. So that, that number, these are all in order of, from highest to lowest. This is almost entirely offset by revenues. The two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase in the rec budget, I think their net in, their net impact to the, to the overall budget is less than forty thousand dollars.
So that would be interesting to see if you could add a column in here to kind of, I don't know if that, how much work that would be, just to see which ones kind of pay for themselves versus which ones are
Yeah.
a true cost.
Yeah.
Because I think it would be helpful, if we're talking about targeting in on things, either you do what you can to increase revenue in those areas that they pay for themselves, and then maybe at the end of the year, you do a funds transfer to cover other areas that maybe aren't self-sufficient. But then on the areas that are just true costs, we could focus in on those, and I think sorting it by highest to lowest makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it just kind of gives you a look at it, and, and, you know, you, you hit it right, right smack, right on the head when you started at a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, our insurance increase is huge. We're dealing with this at EcoMane as well. Our property and casualty insurance went to, from less than three hundred thousand, it's over a million dollars now. And they're looking at potentially decreasing our insurance of, of insurability of the plant from, you know, a hundred percent down to seventy-five, fifty, and twenty-five, to kind of bring those premiums in line. And they're looking at potentially, you know, is it cheaper at some day when that plant is out of, out of useful life to turn it into a transfer station and haul it to Juniper Ridge instead of building a two hundred million dollar facility? They could build a twenty million dollar facility for, you know, essentially what the same service it would provide. I think it's short-sighted, but I also think we're gonna be pushed in those type of directions fairly soon with challenges and costs. We'll prepare this overview for you that tries to line up the revenues as best as we can. But remember, we only have about thirteen categories of revenues. So you'll see a small, like, fire department, they'll, they'll be like, you know, a hundred and, like I said, a hundred and eighty thousand, a hundred and eighty-five thousand in revenues, offset against their, you know, one point four million budget. But, you know, I'm looking down through here, some of these have no revenues tied to them. Like, what do you do with the town clerk, for instance? She basically collects all our fees, everything in the town, it comes through the clerk's office. So they, they touch it, basically, all the money that's non, even the property taxes they touch, everything comes through that, those windows. So, you know, how do you assign something there when, we'll just, we'll do our best to kind of split it up a little bit. Might categorize those with a different color code or something. Uh, yeah, municipal billing, code enforcement is, is an actually a pretty good one. His budget is, is entirely paid for as well. His, the fees they generate in inspections have always paid for themselves and paid for the staff there as well. Streetlights, Mark's an interesting one, because you're basically self-funding your own, your LED lights that you have out there. So, you know, you, you know, we did ten percent a year just as a placeholder. I mean, you could do nothing, or you could budget half of that if you wanted to, and it just would extend your payback to, to that fund. Yeah, some of the smaller stuff, I don't know if I'd bother too much with, but, um, yeah, we can, we can certainly do that for you and, and come back to you with, you know, what, what I, our eyes are to a point where we just don't know anymore. And we don't want to do something that is extreme without, you know, discussing with you first and saying, does this make sense? And, you know, remember, the charter gives you the authority to basically give recommendations on the gross appropriation for each department. The individual line items are given to you in that budget book, just so you can see how it's built. Because if you don't know how it's built, then you don't know where the money's going and how it's worked. So for me, I think we've always given you the books, we've always given you the, I call it the look behind the curtain, but, you know, this is how we've put our budgets together and kind of been open and tried to be as transparent as we can. But it comes to a point where you're gonna have to make some tough decisions someday about, you know, what's, what's gonna fall out, what's gonna fall out of the municipal side of the world. And we may not be able to be, to do all these, these great things we're able to do today. So a lot more to talk about, but I have honestly had the most difficult time with this budget, primarily because I, I think we've come out, out of some very difficult years, and we've been able to keep a high level of services. And that high level of services can only move forward if we look at, how do we avoid future steep increase in costs? And that only can be done if we have a bigger department and most of these bigger services, so.
Have we, or can we, and will we, can we put our insurance out to bid?
Uh, yes, but I don't know if we can do it for July first.
Clerk is our provider right now, right?
Our agent, yeah.
Yes.
Our agent. We pretty much, Massamont and Trident are the majority of the insurance carriers we use, and they seem to be, and Travelers as well. So those, those are the big companies that are bidding on our insurance. It's not so much the agent, the issue.
But I, it's, uh, I think it's just, as a responsible, we should at least put it out to bid and see what we get.
Okay, uh, we're kind of running out of time, but we'll, we'll try.
Yeah, all right. The other thing, and I know, we're, we're, we're looking for nickels and dimes when, because we can't find the dollars. When I went through the budget here and, and looked at each cost center, and I look at electrical costs, and I look at fuel costs and gas costs. Can we have a, can we have one number that we can look at that and track that as kilowatts? Whether we're, you know, we're using more than we've been, kind of a, a history?
Uh, we can, uh, we have a lot of meters.
I'm not sure the exercise is warranted, but I'm.
Yeah. I can break down the overall cost to show you what we pay in, in utilities, and you can look at that. But Chris probably does it more regularly than anyone. If you look in the Public Works budget, he has just about all the, the meters listed, and he shows those pretty close, every month, essentially, but.
I, I looked at the library versus West Cumberland, and I thought to myself, boy, the library is, is a pretty efficient building, you know? If I look at the years and I, as a percent, and maybe I missed a number there, but.
Well, the West Cumberland's tiny, tiny number.
I know, but it, as a percent, it's, you know, there's a lot more square footage in the library.
Right.
And, and they seem to be a more, it seemed more efficient than the West Cumberland rec hall.
Well, that would surprise me, because we've put a lot of work into that, and I, I haven't seen a real significant increase, and we've got
No, I didn't.
heat pumps over at the, over at West Cumberland as well.
Right, and I wasn't, I wasn't concerned. I thought the, the energy use over there was, was pretty good.
But the library saw as fairly efficient.
Well, I just thought, okay, here's this, I worked out the square footage of the, of the rec hall, and then I mentally did the square footage of the library, and I thought, geez, this library is, is a lot more efficient than I thought it would be.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question about Ion in the tech department? So how many days are they here in person for assistance, based on our current contract?
Uh, two days a week, and we were asking for a third.
And what is the additional cost for that third day? I'm just wondering, just, I'm just looking at contracted services here and like,
Yep.
you know, I think we've, twenty twenty-four actual is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, but budgeted two hundred and seven. So I'm wondering, is that additional day, that fifty K, or is that like?
That was a question I had had, too.
Yeah, like, it just, I, I just, I just had to reset my password recently, and nothing against them personally, they called me back. But it took two, three days, and I, before I really felt like something that I should be able to do immediately that I couldn't do.
Right.
So it just made me a little frustrated, I guess. And so I'm wondering, how much are we paying for that additional day if they're here two days a week, and do we need that, and could we cut?
Well, we had five, we went down to two, and we're moving up to three, primarily for emergency services, police, fire, because they do police, fire, they basically do all the work at the fire station. And we're also, they also do all the work at the golf course, on our purchase and sale machines and everything to do with the golf and online signups and all the, all that stuff as well. So they're, they're busy. They're busy when they're here, and staff feels pretty stressed when they can't get a hold of them either, so.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, like, why are, that service, like, why wasn't I able to reset my password on my own like I can in every other website that I use, from my bank to my mortgage provider to my, you know, whatever? I just, it just struck me as like, what are, what are they doing? You know, and so, and not, not to dial in on them specifically, but it just was, of course, staff would feel stressed if you can't reset your password.
Well, we're also in a time where our last IT person left us, and, and we're hiring a new person through Ion. So they're basically trying to manage it with kind of substitutes right now, and it's been tough, been tough, especially with the power outage we had and everything that went with it, so.
Okay, well, we're just talking, we're, we're just talking about additional areas to look, different, fresh eyes, and so that was just an area, like, is that extra day, how much does it cost us for a year? And if it's a significant number, like, maybe we talk, it's two days enough still, you know? So I just, I just raised that. But again, I didn't, I guess, fully appreciate the fact that they're working with fire and EMS and all those folks, and maybe they need those services.
That was kind of my question with Valhalla. We spent a lot of money, we're spending a lot of money on chemicals and fertilizers, but then we turn around and spend a lot of money on seed and soil. So are we over-fertilizing and killing the grass, and then we have to plant it again? I'm sure we're not.
We're not.
But that's also a group that I feel like should be like color-coded green, because
They're neutral.
they pay for themselves, right? And so like, my thought.
Almost.
No, they do.
Yeah, they do.
Way closer than they used to.
Four years now.
No, they've been profitable for how many years?
At least four years, maybe five.
Okay.
I did have a question about abatements, because it, it does, it shows up as a no change, but from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, we went from fifty-five thousand to three hundred and two thousand dollars.
Yes, we did.
What's that?
Yes, we did.
Why?
Senior stabilization. That's, see, we had to basically expense it out, and now we're, now it's gonna be back down to zero.
All right, that makes sense.
I did the same thing, Shirley. I looked at it, I go, what? I laughed as soon as they told me. I said, oh, yeah, yeah, paying attention.
I didn't laugh, I gulped.
And that's why you have it in this for one dollar, right?
Right.
As a placeholder?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because that was a reimbursement. Remember, we used to budget like ten or twenty thousand, and then the assessor came to us and said, look, stop doing that. You basically budget overlay, and that's what overlay should be used for. So when you see the overlay budget, you know, it's usually around a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand, that's where those rebates come out of, so it's all budgeted.
I, I would, if you don't mind, just like to see how much that additional day is for that.
We'll get that for you.
Just, just, I mean, if it's nothing, it's nothing.
I texted you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, it's like the Jetsons.
Yes, the Jetsons.
It should be in your.
Sixteen thousand, five hundred for the extra day.
For the entire year.
For the entire year, okay.
Each day, sixteen thousand, five hundred.
So hold on.
The entire year. You can't talk, sorry.
Well, that's what I'm saying, eighty thousand dollars for five days a week, then?
Yeah.
Like sixteen K a day, times five days?
Well, Bill's question was, what would it take to have somebody on board? We did that originally, and, but what happened there was that the person couldn't keep up with the technology changes as well. So when we went to the contracted service, they were do, able to do everything behind the curtain, as well as service the, you know, everything in front of the curtain. And that is definitely would have cost us more than eighty thousand with benefits and everything else. It was well over a hundred thousand. Thank you for texting my watch, Katie, I appreciate that.
Under insurance, what's R H S A?
Uh, Retirement Health Savings Account.
Okay.
So if you remember years ago, well, some of you don't, but I will share with you. Years ago, we had a massive liability in sick time and vacation time on our books, because we didn't cap it. And people had thousands of hours, and we were able to work that down over almost five or six years, and then we capped it at four eighty and two forty. When people get over that number, so they're not disappearing on us, because we need kind of all hands on deck a lot of times here, they basically get those put into a retirement health savings account, which goes in pre-tax and comes out pre-tax and when they use it. And they have to basically leave our service to basically have access to it.
So in the last budget, we had twenty-five thousand for HR reserve under insurance.
Yep.
And we've spent zero so far. But you've asked for, it put in for double the twenty-five thousand for fifty thousand for next year.
So that's, the, what you do with that is up to you. If you don't fund it, and we go over, we go over, and that's really your call to transfer at the end of the year. That is for essentially departures, when people leave our employment, and they have big stacks of vacation pay accumulated that we're paying out. One year, we got hit pretty good when we had three longtime police officers all retire within a, like, an eight-month span, and that kind of wiped us out, essentially. So we've been trying to build up a reserve fund for those cases. So that wouldn't be a bad thing to, uh, go ahead, Katie, we're underwater right now, so.
Twenty-five thousand of that is for the new Maine.
I am sorry, that's right.
The new what?
Twenty-five for the new HR, uh, for the new Angela.
Oh, right.
Angela's, Angela's, is that what it's for?
No, no, nope. Uh, for the new Maine family leave.
Oh, FMLA.
That's the twenty-five thousand for our point five percent that we have to have ready for the FY twenty-six that we need to start taking in FY twenty-five, start January first. So twenty-five thousand of that is for that.
So.
Okay, so that's why that doubles.
Correct.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you, Katie, good catch. Uh, so that's. Uh, so that's another thing that, that will probably come up. There's, there's a lot of debate amongst employers right now what to do with that. So, uh, beginning in, as Katie, Katie described, in a couple of years, we're going to be paying, uh, point-two-five percent, we're required to pay of our payroll, our total payroll, to this fund. It's kind of like a, uh, almost like workers' comp, uh, where you pay into a fund.
We pay half and employees pay half, right?
Right, it's all dependent on employees, and it's all dependent on your salary. So, um, twenty-five thousand is what our percentage would be. Some employers are absorbing that for the employee as well. We, we have not in our budget. And, um, that to me should be a bargained item through, you know, the unions, and we're going through three union contracts right now. So I don't know where that'll land when we're done, but, uh, that's still very new, and there is some discussion that it may go away, so we don't know. Uh, so the family medical leave, well, if, if people have the ability, will have ability to take sick time up to four-hundred-and-eighty hours, I think it is?
Twelve weeks.
Twelve weeks, twelve times forty, four-hundred-and-eighty, uh, a year, and I think it's a rolling year. And that's, in many cases, in addition to, you know, what the employer already offers. Sometimes it goes, uh, on parallel tracks, which I hope it does in our case. So, uh, we'll be having to watch that very closely as that develops, because the rulemaking for that has not come out yet. So we're not sure what that's going to look like yet, but we've been told you shall basically start, uh, putting twenty-five, uh, point-two-five percent of your payroll into a payroll tax for FMLA. So, thank you, Katie, forgot about that.
It's point-five?
Point-five total, but point-two-five from the employer and point-five...
It's one percent.
A one percent total.
One percent, so point-five for...
Just keeps getting better.
Employees and point-five for employers.
That's, that's state, not federal?
State, state of Maine, yep.
State's really just doing a great job for us this year.
Yeah, so...
Can I, can I, oh, sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, um, it's not a huge number, but I, I know we had outsourced our general assistance to the county, right?
Right.
And I'm wondering, it's a twenty percent increase, and again, it's not a massive number if you compare it, sort it on the spreadsheet, but do we know a little bit why that's, I thought there was going to be some net savings there in terms of, obviously, there was the personnel savings of us not having to do as much work, and confidentiality, and these other things that were important, but... I just don't know if, is it, is it because there's a larger need for general assistance, and as a result, we pay based on the number?
Well, seventy-five percent of your general assistance is refunded by the state, so that is if you...
So that'll be reflected in revenues?
That'll be reflected in your overall cost, because this is your net cost. So all the expenses we pay out of this for, um, for rent assistance and other items, uh, that we pay out of this are all netted out during the year, uh, against the reimbursements from the state. So we usually spend probably somewhere around a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and net, we spend, uh, just under probably thirty-five to forty thousand annually.
So you're telling me that that seven-thousand-dollar increase is our net cost increase?
No, no, no. This thirty-five and forty-two thousand is our net cost. So we're well over a hundred thousand more than that annually, uh, between rent assistance, fuel assistance, so a whole bunch of things that we pay for that are eligible state costs. As long as they're eligible, and the state has, and we've adopted the, uh, you know, code like we do every October, we approve the MMA proposal for general assistance, and that big chapter of payouts, and how much a family can get each month, and all that. That's being tracked by the county, and, uh, uh, they've done a much, much better job than we did, because some of our costs last year were basically found to be ineligible, and we didn't get reimbursed, because we didn't file the right paperwork. So I would try to steer you away from that. The county does a great job with that program, and in the end, uh, they will be cheaper than we can do it. Because you can't charge out your payroll to that, which we were told, well, we thought we could, and we can't. So that's basically our net cost to the county, plus a little bit for incidentals. I, I'm pretty sure in your book, you have the breakdown of that, too.
I do, yeah.
I had a couple of questions under recreation. So the credit card fee has more than doubled.
Yes, it has.
Is there any way to negotiate something with another provider? Or, I don't know how that all works, but...
You want to talk about that, Katie, or...
It's gone up like four times in the past three years.
Yeah, go for it. I know you've talked about it through Munis and, uh, other things.
So right now, we did get a new contract. We just got it from her, Deanna, um, with ActiveNet, to look, review those credit card fees to go into a, um, subscription service, so it's like a same every year. I haven't had, I just got it, um, the proposal, so we're gonna dive into that.
So that's something negotiable that it could come?
We're gonna, yeah, take a look at that, and, and there's only a couple options for these rec programs anyways, and they're very similar in terms of, you might pay here, but you're gonna pay for it somewhere else, you know?
I know that, and I, but I know how much recreation depends on it with just the volume of registrations that, that they do.
Yeah.
It would cost us a lot more to staff those positions than it would be to just do the credit card.
And I believe Pete absorbs that cost into his...
I had another question, and this just could be a typo. So adult fitness, it goes from seventy-five ninety up to nineteen-four, but it says a zero percent increase. Twelve thousand dollars is not a zero percent increase. It's line forty-one oh-five. I know you're finding me annoying. I did go through this line by line.
Oh, it's a fif...
Are you, are you looking at Munis, or are you looking at the sheets?
The Munis. Like, we budgeted zero for it last year, but we spent, this year, we've spent...
Seven thousand, five hundred.
Seven thousand, five ninety, and the budget for being proposed is nineteen thousand, four hundred.
What was the name of that again, Shirley? What was the name?
Adult Fitness.
Adult Fitness.
Okay, because some of these budgets have moved around a little bit.
And I see adult enrichment, because that would cover some of what Devon does.
It's just a new line, it's just a new line, that's why. It's easy fix. Yeah.
Where's adult, yeah, you need adult fitness expenses there, and you don't... Adult fitness.
Yeah, there, there's nineteen-four for that. It looks like it's a new program.
It was a new program, was pulled out.
Yep.
It was pulled out of another line.
Yeah.
And for this year, we've spent seven thousand, five hundred ninety in that category, and forty-three, forty-five cents.
Well, we'll get you some answers on where, where that got either combined or how it's changed. That's, should be pretty simple.
Okay. You had mentioned that, um, we, instead of giving a travel allowance to Bill Longley, we're going to get him a vehicle. Where does that appear in the budget?
It's in the capital budget, uh, the capital equipment budget.
Okay.
Uh, we will basically look to use a, uh, another vehicle from another department for this year, until we get it established, because we didn't want to add fifty thousand dollars into this budget.
Whatever happened to the, to the free vehicles that we had that turned out to be not? Remember, someone gave us some loner vehicles?
Oh, yeah, the electric vehicles. They, the lease came out.
Those were leases, though.
They're three-year leases, they all expired in March.
Yeah, those were...
Okay, so they just kind of went away?
Kind of went away, yep.
We just weren't using them, or?
No, we were using them, it's just that we didn't want to spend eight thousand dollars for them to keep them, so we basically gave them back. We didn't, we didn't continue with the free lease after three years, so. Program was offered.
Bring it with you.
And we took advantage of it, it worked well, the vehicles were great, but now we're, now we're using, uh, uh, recycled cruisers, you know, to kind of replace that now. So our plan for our next meeting is really to kind of, uh, give you the final, final combing of the budget, if you will, that we can do, and then, um, ask for any additional direction you have. We will also go into detail into the TIP budget. I will happily wipe out anything that's not even ready to be funded, uh, in this year, and, but leave those numbers on the side for you to remember how much they actually cost. So at some time, you'll have to kind of plug something into the budget, so you'll see, you know, truly where we are today versus what's projected. That's simple to do. And, uh, then we'll have a discussion on, you know, what you'd like to do next, because, um, as far as I can go is really where we are today. If we have to do more, it'll be, um, it'll be some direction on what you'd like to give up, because it's gonna be pro, on a program size. It's not gonna be, you know, let's cut three dollars out of the stamp budget, you know, it's, it's not, it's a long way to go. Then on May fourteenth or fifteenth, I'll have a, basically, presentation, full presentation of the public, and, uh, we'll probably have a better, better numbers, especially from the school by then. So that'll hopefully tighten this up, uh, quite a bit. Uh, you know, when you're looking at, uh, you know, over a dollar increase, it's, it's, it'll choke you. It chokes me every time I see the number. So, uh, I've got a, we've got to hopefully come up with, uh, some additional savings. But, you know, it's a big number. It'll be, you know, three hundred thousand plus to get us down below a dollar, and that'll be a lot. I don't see that just coming from the municipal side. Hopefully, we'll get some of that more, savings from the school, and if we can see that, uh, number come down, that'll be, that'll be big. That'll be big. But if you look at the history of our budgeting process, it always kind of goes, starts at the high end, and then by the time we get to April, May, it has come down significantly. We just haven't had those numbers back from the school yet. So hopefully, we'll have those by, uh, the next meeting, and we'll have better news.
Mr. Manager, are we allowed to, um, I guess I'm running the meeting, so...
You can do anything you want.
Are we able to allow, um, Ms. Benazir to ask a question here?
Sure, absolutely.
Do you mind just stepping up?
Wasn't, it's Linda Benazir at Schooner Ridge. Um, it's not a question, it's, um, well, I guess it is. I would like to ask you to look deeper into charging for the bags, the recycling bags. And three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to give up in a year. We're gonna be on a six-month plan. The following year, it'll be the full three hundred thousand. To me, trash could be an enterprise fund. I'm, I'm not gonna suggest that, but there's no harm in paying for part of it. And I, as a person who has watched recycling and worked as a volunteer for many, many, many years, there's a whole psychology to this recycling, and I'm afraid that we will see, if we give up the bags, the revenue, I mean, I, I would rather see the policeman and the fireman and pay for my bags. But the other thing I'm concerned about is that our actual, people get lazy, and we will get more contaminants into that barrel that's supposed to be the trash. And so I think, uh, it would behoove us to, if someone has the ability to check with, uh, Falmouth and Wyndham, I think those are at least two of the ones that have started the system, and see how it's working for them. I mean, if they have some horrible things to say, then maybe not, but I would really like to see that as one place that we could take some serious, um, improvements in your budget. But thank you for all your work, and, uh, you know, I appreciate and understand how many kazillion hours you have to put into this.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the comment as well. Do we, do we know, Mr. Manager, or is Falmouth or other towns using these as enterprise funds? Trash, like where it's like just per...
Yarmouth, Yarmouth does. Uh, Yarmouth basically only pays if it comes to the transfer station, so...
Okay.
Uh, if you do your curbside pickup at your house, you pay for that. Cape, I think, is in the same ballpark. Uh, we don't have a transfer station, and it would double this budget if you wanted one. But our, you see, the last item on the, uh, on the budget sheet there is the waste dis...
I think that's great. So I guess next steps are, you guys are gonna spend a little bit more time doing another comb through, seeing if any other things can be trimmed, and then we'll come back maybe in, I guess, two, three weeks now, with a little bit more of like a heat map, in terms of which things are paying for themselves versus which ones are kind of true, true costs.
Yeah, yep.
And then, I guess, for the council, any additional questions we have, let's shoot them out, because I think everybody, the more eyes on this, the better.
Yeah, those four pages, Shirley, thank you. They were all good, they were all good questions, so I, I was happy to do it.
I'd like to see a breakdown on the mill rates, on the state valuation.
I'm much better at my town council homework than I never did my school homework.
Yeah, we'll also have the mill rates, uh, in, equalized mill rates, state mill rates for the county, we'll have that for you.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for preparing this. I know this has been a tough budget. Looks like we have another question here. Please.
The first one is, I've, I mentioned it before, and that's the cost of a police dog. First of all, I don't know that, why the si, town the size of Cumberland has to have a police dog. I'm not, I'm not against it, but when I see budgeted eight thousand dollars a year for a dog, I went and did some research. I went and talked to several professional people who were involved with guard dogs and so forth. That's, that's way out of line for, for expenses, including vet fees and food and supplements and vaccinations. It's way out of line. There may be something more there that I don't know of, but I, right off the bat, my feeling is you could cut five thousand dollars off from that. That's number one. Number two, I've heard a lot, and you folks may already have addressed this, of people moving into town as businesses, um, buying single-family homes, and putting people of urgent care or, or some type of monitoring to them. And we get, uh, as a town, have to supply emergency vehicles to them, emergency aid, pick them up to put them back into bed and so forth. And, and my feeling is, if it's a true emergency pers, position, I think we should render that. But if it's just a maintenance problem, which appears, the people are telling me it is, we should really charge these people for doing this, and therefore add to our income in funding the rescue. We're limited on the rescue now, so if we send a rescue to Blackstrap, say, to put somebody back in bed for the third time today, we're, we're, we've already heard from the fire department, we're doing a disservice to the rest of the town, because we don't have a rescue available for them. So you may have already looked into this, but I, I think right there is a chance for additional income if we're not charging for it, but it, it should be something that, that we look into. Other than that, keep up the good work. I'll sit here and listen, and if I can be of any help, I'd be glad to. And as you well know, I've done this a couple of times.
Just, just a few times, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the comments.
Yep.
Okay, I think, um, if you're okay with it, Council, I think I'm gonna probably give us a little bit of a recess before our seven o'clock meeting, unless there's any other questions from the public. Okay. Seeing done, we will recess for twenty minutes until our regular meeting. Thank you.